So we will now call this meeting the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to order. This is a hybrid meeting, both virtual and in person, as allowed by factor two of the acts of 2023, setting certain provisions of the open meeting law until March 31st, 2025. Since this person is a hybrid meeting, we can hold them the rules of like the virtual meeting, meaning we'll start with a roll call. But first, let me mention that we will be recording the meeting. If anyone wants to record, they have the right to do so, like you're notifying me. Is there anyone that will be recording? All right, thank you. And let's, can we start with a roll? Is Sheila?
I am. I'm all ready for you.
Okay, good. Could you say it already?
In doing the roll, please, I will name your town or city. And would you just tell me your name, whether you're a delegate or not, if you're here? Adams? Alfred? Beckett?
Here, Diana Mott, alternate.
Thank you. Cheshire?
Peter Trab, delegate.
Thank you. Clarksburg. Dalton. Egremont.
Mary McGurn, delegate.
Thank you. Florida. Great Barrington.
Pedro Pachino, delegate.
Malcolm Vick, alternate.
Thank you. Hancock. Hinsdale.
Tony Zanaboni, delegate.
Thank you. Lanesboro.
Lee and Yinger, delegate.
Thank you. Lee?
Fuck Donovan, delegate.
Thank you. Lennox. Monterey.
Laura Mancy, delegate.
Mount Washington?
Beckett.
New Ashford? New Marlborough? North Adams?
Kyle Hanlon, delegate.
Otis? Peru? Pittsfield? Irvin, delegate. Richmond? Sandersfield? Savoy? Sheffield?
Lee Butala, alternate.
I'm sorry, I don't have your name here. Would you say that again, please?
Lee Butala. I'm replacing Renee Wood.
Okay. Thank you. Stockbridge.
Christine Brassmanson, alternate.
Thank you. Tieringham? Washington?
Dan Gack, delegate.
Thank you.
Peter Matt-
Also Peter Mattson, alternate.
For... What town is that? Washington?
Washington.
Okay, I don't have your name. So could you say it again?
Peter Mattson, M A T S O N.
Thank you. West Stockbridge? Williamstown?
Roger Bolton, alternate.
Thank you. Windsor?
Douglas McNally, delegate.
Thank you.
Also Ben Beddersen is an alternate.
Okay.
And I will be participating for the first half hour of the meeting. But I'm hosting the wild and scenic Westfield meeting here tonight as representative from the RBC. So I will cut out and Ben will vote for anything after the 6:30 when I have to leave.
Okay, great. Thank you for letting us know. All right. That is the...
Thank you, Sheila.
Tendence.
All right, the next order on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes for September 25th, 2024, full commission meeting. I'll obtain a motion to approve.
So move, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Are there any comments or corrections?
Yes, I have one. Sheila, I'm listed as an alternate when in fact I'm a delegate for Pittsfield.
Anyone else have any comments, questions? All right, hearing none more comments, we proceed to a vote.
All right, Adams? Beckett?
We'll be setting up.
Who I-
I'm from Beckett, Diana.
Okay. All right. I think Robert Ronzio is not here, is that correct?
Yes. I think Al Blake is here. He's another person from Beckett, but I don't know if he's-
I have Robert Ronzio as the delegate.
Right, and I'm Diana Mott, I'm the alternate.
Okay, and but Robert's not here, so you're the voting person tonight. Just kind of keep it straight.
Okay.
Okay, our, wait a second. Peter?
Yeah.
You're a delegate, right?
Yes, intentionally.
Okay, because they have two delegates listed, so it's... So we'll have, would you, are you approving the minutes then? Are you the one approving or not approving them? Okay, great. Okay, Egremont?
Yes.
Florida? Great Barrington? Pedro, are you, you're the delegate?
Yes, sorry, I said yes. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Okay.
Great Barrington?
That was Great Barrington.
That was me, from Great Barrington. Pedro, I said yes.
I'm sorry, okay. Hancock? Hinsdale?
Yes.
Lanesboro?
Leanne?
Leanne, are you? Lee?
Abstain.
Lennox? Monterey?
Yes.
North Adams?
Stain.
Pittsfield, yes. Sheffield?
Abstain.
Stockbridge?
Yes.
Washington?
Abstain.
Williamstown?
Yes.
Windsor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. The next item on the agenda are comments from the RBC delegates and all of us. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up to the commission tonight?
Yes, Malcolm, this is Pedro from Great Barrington. I might be out of order here, but I was wondering if there's any news that could be related regarding the Healthy Incentive Program. I read a story on Monday that the state is going to cut the program in half. I wonder if Tom or anybody else at the RBC knows anything about it?
I don't know anymore than what you just said, Pedro. It seemed like it was a budgetary item, is what I was reading. And I was going to be very honking to farmers who have been, you know, this is an important item for farmers markets and those types of things, but also for the people who depend on that. So that's about it that I know.
Okay. Anything else have any comments? Thanks, Pedro. The next item is comments from the public. Are there any members of the public who are not delegates and delegates who would like to bring up anything with the commission? Okay, hearing none, we will proceed to the heart of our meeting tonight, which is a presentation discussion related to the ADU provisions in the Affordable Homes Act. I'm going to introduce Catherine Neal, who's the ADU Coordinator for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Thanks for work, thanks, Neil. And I believe you have other people with you. Could you introduce them for us? It's on to you.
Yeah, thank you for the introduction. Can everybody hear me okay? Very good. I would just request actually that this portion, well, I will do the staff introductions, but I am going to request that this part of the presentation actually isn't recorded. And that would be similar to the webinar that we gave actually at the start of the month as well. So we just, we weren't aware in advance of the meeting that this would be a recorded session. And it just kind of allows us to have kind of more frank dialogue with everybody. Recording stopped. Okay, awesome. I appreciate it, folks. I actually have shared a copy of this presentation in advance with you, Tom, and you're happy, like, I'm happy for you to like circulate that with everybody afterwards. And we have a copy of the presentation, a very similar version up online as well. So yeah, I would say thank you so much for having us this evening. My name is Catherine Neal. I am the new ADU Coordinator here at the EOHLC. I'm in this role about five weeks and you are my first RPC that I get to come and present to. So I'm very excited to be connecting with you folks at the more local level. I am joined by two of my colleagues from, one of my colleagues from the EOHLC, Felipe Zambrini, who's the manager of the Community Assistance Unit. He will join me in the presentation in a little bit. And we're also have Margaret Hurley from the Attorney General's Office. And she's senior legal counsel there as well. So she'll join us for the Q and A session at the end. So I'm here today just to give you an update on what the ADU legislation is about and the process kind of rolling forward, you know, as we see it in the next few months. We're very much in a listening mode, I would say. So some of the legislation was adopted and we will go through that. But we are here to very much to listen to your comments, your questions and concerns. Because that'll help us or inform us with drafting of the regulations that we're in the process of at this point in time. I am going to share, we do proceed this, can I just check in, Tom? Just in terms of the amount of time for this presentation and the Q and A, can I just get a sense on what your expectation is? Because I know there was a bit of a shifting in the agenda. So I just want to check in kind of how much time we have overall.
Well, you told me that you had a hard stop at seven. Is that still correct?
Yeah, that would still be kind of on point. Yeah, yeah. So we're thinking kind of like 20, 20, 25 minutes for the presentation and we can use the rest of the time for Q and A. Does that work? Okay, awesome. Okay, fantastic. I will share this presentation, so let me just think, okay.
And while Catherine is sharing, thank you all for having us. You're the first RPA that we're meeting with in this more focused way. So really appreciate that, Tom, and for, you know, being open to have us join you all. Carry some patience with us. There might be a lot of questions that you all might have that we do not have answers to. We'll delve more into what are some of the next steps that we're working on and some of the best practices we are recommending for communities to take on at this moment in time. But like Catherine and I will walk through, we are very much working daily, nonstop, on getting these regulations done and getting a draft regulation out the door, so that we can get folks to give us comments as soon as possible and as with as ample time as we can possibly have folks provide us comments. So with that, Catherine, take it away.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so looking good? Everybody can see?
Yes, yes.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so just to re-briefly run through the agenda of the topics we'd like to cover in this session. We'll go through kind of what's in the new ADU law as it currently stands in section seven and eight. We will go through what the kind of the key kind of like components of that, what they look like. And then we'll talk about our role as EOHLC, the AGO, and then kind of what we expect then from municipalities and how we can kind of work together on the rollout of this. We'll give you an overview of some of the things that we're considering for the regulations, just to give you a kind of sense of what be coming through that. And then also talk about what supports we're offering to municipalities. And then kind of next steps in terms of as we see it. Anyone who's seen the webinar on November 4th or participated in that session, we had over 850 people attend. This is going to be kind of repeat content for a lot of you folks, but hopefully you'll learn something new. And we in turn will learn something new as well from you with that. So what is the new ADU law? I think, you know, given the people in the room today, we all recognize there is a massive housing crisis within the state of Massachusetts and across the country as well. And there is need for action on that. And then at the state level, we were very fortunate to have passed an alleged obsession over the summer, the Affordable Homes Act, which came in in August 2024. And within that, there was the $1.6 billion housing bond bill, but a number of different policy items as well that were attached to that, recognizing that we have the opportunity to really move forward here in the state to do something with housing. And a part of that was the enactment of the new ADU legislation statute. So I would note within that as well, the effective date of that statute is February 2nd, 2025. So we recognize that, you know, there's a bit of lead time kind of needed before that takes full effect. So what do we mean by ADUs? So these are very much secondary to the primary dwelling that that would be on a lot as was given. And these take multiple different forms. And there are a number of just different municipalities across the state currently with ADU bylaws, which is something I think that, you know, worth kind of keeping in mind. There are a number of towns and cities that don't have this. There are some that have them and they're implemented as we see them. But ADUs basically can exist in a number of different forms. We can see them within an existing structure, through an attic conversion, the splitting of a house into different units, or basement conversion, or attached to a current dwelling as it stands, or then as a detached structure, so the conversion of a garage or the creation of a new structure on site as well. So they come in a number of different forms, kind of worth keeping in mind. So why do we need this new law? We definitely see this as part of the solution to how Massachusetts responds to the housing crisis. And we're, you know, we're really seeing these as being, you know, like more, slightly more affordable housing units that can accommodate either aging seniors, you know, like income opportunity for rental for, you know, younger people kind of within the state as well. So that, you know, we see this as being kind of like, kind of an opportunity for creating infill housing within like areas where housing already exists. And we have a goal of between like 8,000 to 10,000 new ADUs coming in the next five years. So, you know, that's like, we see this as a gradual addition of new housing as well. So it's worth kind of keeping in mind that, you know, we need kind of a number of different things working at the same time to kind of, for the rollout of these. As I mentioned, there are a number of municipalities that already have ADU bylaws. Most of them have some, a variety of restriction in place. We're seeing a lot of owner occupancy restrictions. And this has limited the delivery and development of ADUs to date. So those are the restrictions and a number of other ones as well that we'll see kind of the potential removal of as well. But like I mentioned, this would need not just the correct zoning in place.
Uh oh.
But we need other actors such as support of financing and then also the construction industry, so.
Uh oh.
There's a number of different things kind of needed to make this work and we are very much focused on-
I think we're losing you once in a while and you're freezing.
My, my video?
Yeah.
Audio, actually, audio. We can see you, but you're breaking in there.
Oh, shoot, okay. Is the sound, well, I might off my video and then hopefully the sound quality will be better. Okay, I'm going to stop my video. Hopefully, yeah, let me know, let me know if that, I'm so sorry, I hate when the sound quality is terrible on these things. Let me know if that is a little bit better and I can, Felipe can always repeat anything that I may have missed. So thank you for letting me know. And so this becomes effective. The definition change happened through section seven on August 6th, 2024. And then also the new update to section eight becomes effective on February 2nd. With that, I'm actually going to hand it over to Felipe to give you an overview of what sits in the statute currently.
So I'm of course not going to read this to you all. I want to respect your, all of your intelligence and everyone here is capable of finding this, which by the way, I put the link on the website of our website, mass.gov/ADU. We have the full language of the law there as well. And all the content that's going to be coming up will be posted on that website as well. But generally speaking, section seven amends the previously defined definition of a necessary dwelling unit in chapter 48. So this is, this is key because for the purposes of the law, this is now the definition that section eight will be protecting as a protected ADU. And now again, I won't read all of this, but I do want to highlight a few specific sections of this section seven that are important to keep in mind. Catherine, next slide. So section seven highlights the fact that the ADU must be on the same lot as a principal dwelling. I just want to highlight, I know this question comes up every time we have a conversation with folks. We will be providing definition to a lot of these terms in the regulations that we are drafting. Please bear in mind that they are coming soon. We're doing everything we can to have these regulations from out as soon as we can, so folks can have ample time to give us comments. So if you've got an idea of what you think a principal dwelling ought to be, you're going to have some time to provide us commentary on what you think our definition lacks or doesn't lack, or if it's good, if you think it could be stronger. We will be defining a lot of these terms in the regulations that are coming out. And we will be having an opportunity for folks to provide public comment and also a public hearing process. So just keep that in mind. So you're going to hear me use some of these terms that will be defined, we're working on defining them to get them out to everyone, provide commentary. But generally speaking, this is to be able to make sure that the ADU is on the same lot as the home that the ADU is necessary to. That's really going to be important as we move forward. That definition will be key. Catherine, next slide. The law, of course, also sets a new standard for what is the size of these ADUs. Very clearly, you know, half the gross floor of the principal dwelling of the, of the home in which the ADU is necessary to, or 900 square feet, whichever is lesser. I know that there have been questions already about, well, does it mean that we can permit a different ADU? We will be providing answers in guidance through our F A Qs online and throughout the coming months as to questions like that of what do we do with ADUs that aren't defined in this legislation? Next slide. This is a really important section and most municipalities shall reasonably restrict the creation of rental for a necessary dwelling that is not a short-term rental. I do want to highlight that we are going to be very likely addressing the issue of short-term rental more in depth than this alone tackles, whether it's on the regulations or guidance, that's to be seen. But we've already heard great comments. Again, once the regulations are out, if you feel like it has to talk more about short-term rentals or less about short-term rentals, we would like to hear that feedback once the regulation drafts are out, so that we can work on finalizing and promulgating the final document. However, generally speaking, this section of the law here provides the ability for a property owner to create an ADU meant for year-round housing as opposed to short-term rentals. And those types of ADUs cannot unreasonably be restricted. At the same time, this section is giving more flexibility to municipalities to restrict short-term rentals. So it's kind of doing two things at the same time. Again, we'll provide more details on that short-term rental language. We've heard a lot and clear, we need to make sure this is a little more plain speak. So we're going, we're working on that kind of feedback we received. And again, unreasonably restrict will come up again a few more times as we discuss this, so let's keep going because that will come up in a second again. Catherine, next slide. There you go. So the new law establishes the sense that we're talking about as a protected use. This means that there are certain things that are covered in the law that will likely be covered in the regulations and guidance, or either or both, that will be deemed as unreasonable policies that could prevent ADUs from coming forward and being created. But there will still remain matters that municipalities will be able to reasonably regulate. And like I said, we will be tackling a lot of that in the regulations as well as potential guidance as we move forward. But in addition, the law does allow us to address things in guidance. So we may have to provide additional guidance as very unique circumstances come up. And we're ready to listen to those really unique circumstances so that we can help municipalities better understand what to do when they come up. Next slide, Catherine. So once again, I will not read all of this to all of you. I do recommend that if folks want to take a look at section eight, this is in some accounts the bread and butter of the law. We have the definition and now we have this applicability of the permit process and what is required and the byrightness of it all, and then what's allowed by special permit and what's reasonable and what's not reasonable. And parking minimums, this is all included here. We will go over a few key sections here again. But once again, this section is also on mass.gov/ADU. Please take a read through it later if your municipality is working on something related to ADU bylaw. So this sentence here, in the simplest terms we can offer at this time, is that will municipalities be able to allow some restrictions? Yes. You will be able to allow some restrictions. There will be a question of whether they are reasonable or unreasonable. However, that unreasonability is not something that will be allowed, of course. ADUs also that meet the basic definition of the law. This is a big important thing that we are going to be advising communities. On 222, suppose you're either still working on your bylaw modifications and you're waiting for, you know, those regulations to come out. Bear in mind that 2225 is not necessarily a deadline. It is the date in which this law is in full effect. We highly recommend at that time that if your building department sees an ADU permit request that meets the definition of the law, that to the best of your ability, it is permitted without a special permit. As this could create some challenges for folks, but at the end of the day, we really recommend that folks take a look at this as broadly as you can, within the scope of what the law says here, if we're not ready yet to have regulations. Hopefully, we have something ready for folks, but if that's not the case, that is the recommendation we're giving at this time. One key thing I do want to highlight at the very bottom of this sentence, this is a key, key definition. We will be defining single-family residential zoning district. Rest assured that there will be a definition for that topic, for that, for that, for that definition, because it's really, really important term to define. Please be ready to provide comments on this too. We would love to hear from folks what their thoughts are on what we put out. So please be ready for that. Catherine, next slide. So as I previously stated, there may be circumstances where reasonable restrictions can be in place. Of course, this is an excellent brief summary of some of the things. Like I mentioned, there may be some prohibitions of short-term rental. The law allows more flexibility today for short-term rental prohibitions. There are more things pertaining to this that we are going to try to cover in regulations to the best of our ability, but also potentially in guidance. And again, as you see things coming up in the draft regulations that you think it's missing, please make sure that you do provide comment to us so that we can take that and look out. Now, I know it'll sound like a broken record, but we really want that commentary. Catherine, next slide. Now, there are sections in this law that is pretty clear. This is one of the clearest portions of the law. An ADU that is based, that is defined as it is in the law cannot have an owner occupancy. So this is one of the clearest things we have in the law. I'm pretty confident we're going to try to clarify it even further. But this is one of the clearest things that we have in the law as it stands. Owner occupancy cannot be required by municipalities to create an ADU that meets the definition of the law. That is going to be important. Next slide. On parking, the next two slides are on parking. We will provide more guidance to clarify parking requirements. But they're also relatively clear as it pertains to the law, not more than one additional parking space for an ADU. We will provide more information on what this means. There will be further definitions- Uh, we will provide more information of what this means. There will be further definitions more likely. And again, another item where I would highly encourage folks to start thinking about what you would like to see in regulations or in guidance. And Catherine, next slide. And similarly, we've already heard a lot of great questions on this section about transit, especially on how we're defining rail station, subway station, ferry terminal or bus station. We are working on that to be able to have something that's pretty tight and specific. Uh, and once again, please be ready to provide public comments in that. But we will probably provide further guidance as well on this totality of parking requirements as we imagine a lot of questions are gonna be coming up about this. Last but not least of the highlights that we wanna provide of section eight is this final one. Folks have been asking a lot of questions to us about this. What does this mean? At this time, and I really wanna highlight at this time, meaning I, I'm not quite sure if it will change or if it might not. We'll see what happens in the final regulations once everybody's provided comments. But at this time, how we are understanding this portion of the law is to mean that a special permit for more than one A D U is required if a municipality chooses to allow that additional permit for, for any, for a second A D U. Again, we will provide more clarification on this. There will be language most likely in the regulations about this. And so we will be working with municipalities throughout the Commonwealth to craft something that is comprehensive and understandable for this component, which we've heard of a lot of folks that they're not quite sure if this means that you have to have the ability to permit a second A D U by law, or if it's an option to do it. And if it's an option, could you perhaps allow it by right if you so chose to? Uh, or is it really required that that section is second A D U? Or more A D Us, which is the question we've gotten as well. Can we permit more A D Us if we so choose to? We'll be providing additional clarification on that, but at this time, we are seeing this as a shall, right? There is, there shall be a special permit for the use of land of structures for a necessary dwelling unit that is more than one A D U. So that is currently how we're looking at this and we will one hundred percent hear comments on that. And if you have ideas and thoughts, please have them ready for the public comment process. Next slide, Catherine. Uh, I'll pass this to Catherine after the slide, but last thing I wanna put over to you folks is kind of what's going on? What are we trying to do? Um, like I said in the very start, we are working daily. A lot of work is going on uh to craft a regulation that is, we've heard from a lot of folks that they want this to be clear. They want this to be concise. They want it to be simple. They want it to be applicable. Um, on the, on day one, essentially, like that's, that's what we heard loud and clear. The folks want something to be ready by two, two twenty five. I can't promise that that's gonna happen at this point in time. We're trying everything we can to have something delivered to, to communities to be able to start the comment process as soon as possible. And so we are working very, very quickly to try to provide that draft by law. But I do wanna make some, make one thing very clear. This is not like M B T A communities. There's not going to be an approval process. There's not going to be that extensive process of back and forth with the O H L C to approve your district or so on and so forth. We will, of course, very gladly work with municipalities, R P As and anyone who wants to work with us to discuss and provide helpful information. Uh, and we will be promulgating regulations, like I've said several times, as well as further guidance. Uh, currently, all the guidance that we're providing is in the F A Q online. We've gotten so many great questions and we're submitting answers to folks and we're gonna tackle um, some of the additional guidances in the coming weeks, hopefully. Um, additionally, the Attorney General's offices has made very uh available their, their resources to both cities and towns. Now, I know here you all are mostly towns in, in your area. Uh, and of course, whenever you do pass a zoning by law pertaining to A D Us, the Attorney General's office will revise it. Margaret here is one of the folks that will be part of that work. Uh, but they've also made their support available to cities. If, you know, one of the cities in your, in your regions, especially to you, Tom, are curious about like figuring out here, we have something drafted. We want you to review it for us. We're, we're making ourselves available upon requests to support those requests as well. And of course, we are working very closely with the Attorney General's office. Uh, if they have questions, they come to us and if we have questions, we go to them as well. Last but not least, on municipalities, um, at this time, we highly recommend that you review your bylaws. Like I said, we're not telling folks that you have to have a bylaw by two, two twenty five, right? It is not a deadline. It is when the law will be in full effect. Um, we know very well that town meeting happens after the effective date of this law. Uh, we know that we're on crunch time and we're doing everything we can to get regulate, draft regulations out to folks to make comments as soon as possible. But if you do have an existing bylaw, take a look at it. Start thinking about, you know, is this in line with the general notion of the law as is prior to me getting the regulations for me to review them and see what's going on? If you don't have an existing bylaw, please consider adopting one. We highly recommend adopting a bylaw once we have the regulations. We will have a model by law, so don't worry about having to go and draft something of your own. We will provide resources to all municipalities in the Commonwealth to take a look at our model by law. We've heard loud and clear that that model by law cannot be a one size fits all, so we're trying to figure out how to do that as well. Rural communities, gateway cities, larger cities, how do they implement this? Uh, we, we, we've heard, we hear that loud and clear, and so we're trying our best to make sure that the model by law is malleable, is flexible and folks can utilize it as a tool. We will also be providing checklists uh for folks to think about going through their, their own bylaws. Most likely, we'll be providing two checklists. We're pretty sure that we're gonna try to put a checklist out along with our draft regulations for folks to start asking themselves questions. And then once the full regulation is done, we'll have a more robust checklist for folks to, to use. Um, and be prepared to ask, answer questions from property owners. We don't anticipate there's gonna be a wave of like thousands and thousands on day one. Uh, but some folks may come to you with questions. If you do get questions, we're a resource. I put the email in the chat here as well, E O H L C, A D U Homes, and mass.gov, we manage that, that account together. Uh, so questions can totally come over there. Catherine, take it away. I think you're muted, Catherine.
I, I was one hundred percent muted. Thank you. Um, I won't repeat anything that you've already covered, uh, but I, and I, so I will slide through this um a little bit quickly. So just so folks are aware, the information that'll come through in the regulations that we're currently working on are the key definitions of what's in the statute um and a list of kind of basically what are um unreasonable restrictions as well within that. And we'll also have some information on data collection and reporting. So we very much see this as being like a data driven approach. Um, and we'd like to kind of get a sense of the numbers of, of, of A D Us that are being permitted um in the different localities as well. So we are working through that um with some of the folks at Open Gov um and with building inspectors as well. So support for municipalities, um, as Felipe mentioned, we will be updating the F A Q on our webpage um in the coming weeks. And we are engaging with municipal staff. We have meetings set up with building commissioners and inspectors. Uh, we have a number of different R P As we're looking to kind of engage with on a one on one basis. Um, and we're also meeting technical experts and A D U builders as well. So we have a bit of a gamut of different voices that we're looking to in, involve in this part, as we kind of develop these draft regulations. So, you know, we are thinking kind of broadly about the different user groups within this. Future supports, uh, we, you know, Felipe covered the checklist that we're hoping to, um, you know, basically roll out at the same time as the draft regulations and the model by law as well. And then we also will have more support kind of coming forward, um, talking about, you know, future things like financing and funding. Um, and then, you know, basically, uh, questions for the public and the A D, um, and the construction industry as well. So, uh, just noting that we, you know, we're kind of seeing this as kind of a phased approach to information rolling out. Um, again, this is kind of like, you know, we're very much here to like listen to feedback um and your ideas as well of what we can incorporate at this point, and then also to the public engagement and comment process. So we are very much focused on the municipalities and kind of the, the key users of these documents at the beginning. So talking to planners, building inspectors, and zoning and, and planning board and select board members as well. It's kind of where the session is today. And then future phases of engagement will include industry professionals and then the general public as well. So, you know, we recognize all the different people that this will touch um eventually. And then coming soon, uh, I think we've mentioned this a few times, draft regulations will also include a public comment period and a public hearing date as well. So there will be opportunities uh for us to hear that feedback from you. Um, I believe I sent a message to Tom earlier today. It would be great if we were able to consolidate the feedback from this R P A into um like a key document either at this stage in the kind of like in the draft regulation stage, if there are comments as a follow up to the session, but then also very importantly through the draft regulation uh process itself then as well. Whoops, I went a little quickly. Um, this has been shared in the chat, I'm aware, but our webpage is mass.gov forward slash A D Us. Uh, we have an email address which is E O H L C, A D U Homes at mass.gov. And you, you know, you're more than welcome to send us any emails there. And I also highly recommend that you sign up for the Affordable Home, Homes Act Implementation Newsletter. Um, and you can find that at mass.gov forward slash A H A as well. So I'm with that, I'm going to stop sharing this and I'm gonna turn back on my video. So bear with me as I figure out the, the Zoom uh for that. Um, but, um, yeah, so, um, I think what we'll do is if we could open the floor up to our questions and answers, that would be great. Um, and maybe Felipe, you can start with fielding those.
Um, let's, uh, if anyone wants to, has a question they'd like to ask, please raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Um, we'll start with anyone that's in the room here.
Yeah, my name is Jeff Clemmons. I'm the building commissioner for the city of Pittsfield. Um, and we are already fielding questions about this. Um, and clearly, our, our zoning ordinance has single family residential districts and we're more or less with this new law, we're wiping away those single family residential districts because I'm telling people now, well, you can't put a second dwelling unit, but wait a couple of months and you'll be able to uh just call it an A D U and you'll be allowed to do that. So that's a concern that I think that we're gonna hear more about from the general public once they get wind of this. I don't think the general public is uh generally knowledgeable about this. My question really, that was my comment. My question really is, um, so is the, uh, the definition includes single family residential district? Um, does, does that, is that gonna include within the definition? If you have a nonconforming use and it's like you have a gas station in a residential district, are you allowed to put an A D U? Are you required to allow uh an A D U and vice versa? If you uh um have a single family home in a, uh, other than residential district, would that be allowed to? Uh, are you required to uh permit A D Us in those uh districts? Um, I don't wanna take up all the time. I have a lot of questions. Um, I guess I can start with those and um see where we can go from there.
You know, good questions. Um, hard to answer unfortunately, any questions related to what will be defined because we are drafting those regulations right now. And so to be very honest, I just can't answer what might be in it because we haven't published it. Uh, there will be a definition for that. Um, that, that's the one thing I can tell you for sure. We highly encourage you to provide commentary on whether you think the definition suffices or doesn't fall short or goes too far. We will be looking for that commentary. Um, I think to your gas station question, I, that, that's a really great question. And I hadn't had anybody be that specific, asking us a question like that quite yet. Um, so the principal dwelling is really the thing that's going to guide what is where an A D will be allowed. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm confident that a gas station will not be qualified as a principal dwelling in some accounts because that's um, I would, I, I would put honestly to the building inspectors, would a residential property be allowed to be built on a gas station? I personally do not know. Um, so that would be a phenomenal question to tackle. So this is an interesting item that I'll have, we'll have to bring back to the team and think about how the definition may unintentionally cause or could or could not cause unintentional consequences that we weren't thinking to begin with, like what you're describing. Uh, I'm pretty confident that we are not in, none of our conversations internally have led into gas stations being an option on the table. Uh, but that's something we'll have to bring back to the table to make sure that we're not accidentally creating some problem like what you're describing like that.
Yeah, so that was more, a more extreme example, but if you, you may have you may have a mixed use building that is nonconforming with that residential district, but exists. So those are the kinds of things that we're gonna be faced with.
Um, we are most like, we are most likely going to have some language either in guidance or in the regulations about nonconformity. Uh, we're, we're working through that right now, and so if you have ideas and thoughts about generally nonconformity, please do submit it to us. Uh, we would love to hear your thoughts on that. Um, or reach out to Catherine as well directly so we can have a quick conversation about how, how you're dealing with nonconformity at the local level. There will be something about nonconformity in the definitions themselves. Uh, and, and also how the law, the regulations will consider those definitions, for sure.
And one, one other question on definitions, again, I don't wanna hog all the time, but um, in the definition, I noticed this right away. It, it talks about a separate entrance. Um, as building officials, we're not concerned about the entrance. We're uh concerned about the means of egress. And I, I believe it should say uh as a separate means of egress because the building code requires more than one means of egress. Um, and so I, I think to put in one entrance, that's gonna cause a lot of uh discussion that we, we could avoid just by making the definition clear. Uh, get rid of the word entrance and uh replace it with means of egress cuz then the building code will dictate how many means of egress you need.
That's a good point. We'll definitely take that back to the
But I'll stop there for now, to other people which can answer.
Well, we have uh somebody on Zoom who has their hand up, Mr. Bloom.
Yeah, hi. Uh, this is a question for Philippe, uh, I guess. Uh, I, I read the statute in a way that I hope you can agree with if, because my question will be based on it. But the way I read it, there are two questions to be asked. One is does the statute apply in a given zone? And if it does, does it apply to a given lot? So I read the first question as if the zone allows for a single family residential use, then the law applies in that zone regardless of what else may also be authorized. Is that, is that right, Philippe?
I can't confirm, but there are a few different interpretations as well that we have heard being floated and we're taking all of them into consideration. Uh, that will vary, that will be one of the things that we likely put into the regulations and so please keep an eye on that.
So assuming that I'm correct on that, then my, my question is conditional on that assumption. But assuming that then the, um, the law applies in my town to nearly everything except industrial where single family is not allowed, it'll apply to most of the town. My question is, what do we think about, um, two family houses? Can a two family house that's in compliance with zoning also have a, an A D U in the backyard?
That's, I'm sorry, my four year old has joined the camera. He just finished having dinner. And had to join us now, of course. Um, great question. That will also be something that is clarifying the draft regulations. Uh, we're working through that question right now ourselves to put, uh, to, to perfect, to, to, to provide a clear definition um, without being able to tell you exactly what will be on it because honestly, that's up in the air still at this point as we finalize that draft. It will be addressed and it will be clearly addressed.
Thank you.
Uh, any others here?
Yeah, I have just a comment on that question to expand on that question because we have districts that allow for single family homes or two family homes. So I think that, that would include, um, if you already have a two family home, that you could put an A D U, either attached or detached. It's a single family district. And it's, it's, it's gonna be required that you allow for an A D U in that single family district, even though it's a single and a two family district.
I can, oh yeah, I, I think that, no, I appreciate, I appreciate that comment. Um, yeah, I think to Felipe's earlier answer, that's a, that's a definition clause that we are definitely looking to um clarify within uh the upcoming regulations about how that applies to the two family um dwellings within it, like the, those single family districts.
Yep.
Uh, we have another person in Zoom, I'm too far away. Oh, Leanne, thank you.
Question is to unmute.
Here we go. Um, so if we could return to, um, the does not require owner occupancy in either dwelling? Can you just elaborate a little bit on that? I'm trying to think about where that, where that would come up.
I think the key term is require. Um, for example, if, that there are municipalities that do have an A D U by law already and they require that the principal dwelling, that, that the principal dwelling, the, the, the primary home be a homeowner occupant. As you can see, I'm, I'm, I'm being presented with a unicorn. Uh, it requires a homeowner occupant on the principal dwelling. There are other bylaws that also require that a person who is of a family member perhaps is the only person that could live in the A D U. So those types of So those types of requirements are, are, are not going to be in line with this. And so I think that the scenario that I can mostly give to you that is most applicable here is one of those two that we've seen more recently. Uh, it's those type of requirements that require that the person who is a homeowner must live in the property. And, or, or that the homeowner must, could potentially be in the ADU, that's the other option as well for them, but that they must be in the lot potentially. Uh, so that's something that will be addressed a little more further probably in the regulations and in guidance. But I think that's the cleanest example that I could give you that we have seen.
Thank you.
I did note that there are some folks that didn't use that raise hand feature, uh, Tom, just in case it's useful. But I think, uh, who was it that had their hand, the actual physical hands up? There were some folks that had a, yeah, Ben, the thing, he had his physical hand up as well earlier.
All right, um. I'm sorry, you had something else? Yeah.
No, he was just worried about other people.
Yeah, Diana, would you like to go next?
Sure, um, my question also, um, addresses the owner occupancy issue. Um, so is that to mean that both units can be rented out? And secondly, if the owner is going to occupy one of the units, is there any relief to the owner with in terms of, uh, rental, um, laws? If you have an unruly tenant and you say there's no smoking and they smoke? Or you have someone that's very loud and, and you don't really want that? Um, because you're living right wall-to-wall with this person, I know that typically you really can't terminate, uh, a tenant without going through years of litigation. And I was just wondering, if you're living next door to him, is there any relief in that regard?
So let me answer the questions reverse, I'll answer the second part because I think that's a cleaner one to answer. The lot is not within the scope of defining the you, the actual who lives with you or who doesn't live with you. That, the state laws pertaining to rental will stand most likely in this case. We're, we're not, there's nothing in this law that directly addresses that. To your first question, however, the answer is probably yes. You could have somebody who doesn't live in the property and both units be rented. Uh, that, and that's a feature of that prohibition of owner occupancy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Um, Mary, would you like to?
Um, yes, I'm following up on the first comment or question that was, uh, raised about a commercial structure having an ADU. Eremont's ADU bylaw states this. An ADU may be located on the same lot for a permitted retail business or consumer service establishment, provided that the lot does not also contain a two-family or multifamily dwelling. So how does that fit with what you may be contemplating on regulations?
I think it's hard for us to give an answer to a very specific without actually having the drafts and the final regulations honestly done. Um, what I think I can say to this is as off two, two twenty-five, the law stands. And so again, if somebody does come asking for a permit, look to what the law says. Uh, to make sure that you're not, you're adhering to what the law itself says versus what's on your bylaw. Um, but once the regulations are fully promulgated, I, at that point, I'd encourage you to reach back to us so that we can actually look at that specific case and provide you real guidance once everything is set and written and our regulations are completed and have been finalized and promulgated. Because otherwise, to be very honest, I would be giving you speculative answers. And it wouldn't be really accurate at the end of the day, most likely. And it wouldn't be fair for me to try to give you speculative answers. And also to consult with your town council. Um, that's really going to be pivotal. Um, we're not lawyers for you all, I cannot, I cannot give you legal advice. Uh, we can give you recommendations to what we'd encourage you to do. And one of those biggest recommendations is speak to your town council to see how they would interpret that themselves at the point. And then once the regs are out, uh, or I mean, the final regs are done, promulgated, um, hopefully sometime this winter. Um, we can come back to that conversation together and actually give you some real concrete advice and concrete feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Ben, would you like to, uh, be next?
Sure, thanks. Um, this has been touched on earlier, but can you clarify what happens if existing bylaws are inconsistent with the law for a period of time, given the timeline that we're facing?
Great question. Uh, I will start attempting to answer and Margaret, if I can put you on the hot spot, I'll ask you to back me up here with anything else that you think I can, I have not provided. Um, this law doesn't necessarily vacate your laws in some accounts, right? It, it stands on its own, as most things are in forty-eight, right? The law's in forty-eight, if you don't have a bylaw that tackles, um, pick a topic that's in forty-eight, the forty-eight law stands. So this is why we're, our current recommendation to communities is to truly consider, um, if you have a permit before you that meets the definition of this law, to do your best to make sure that that permit is not outright rejected. Uh, because that could be, that could be problematic. Um, so they're probably going to have to work together in some ways for a little while until you're, you change your bylaws to become in full, in line with what we have. One of the questions that have come up and we're still trying to answer is what do we do if a community wants to have a slightly different bylaw? Uh, sorry, a slightly different ADU also permitted, whether by right or by special permit. We're working on figuring that out as well. Uh, and that's, I think, all that I can share at this moment. Margaret, did I miss something, something else that you think is useful to cover here in this question?
No, I think you, you explained it really well, Felipe. I would just add that if a town has a bylaw provision that is clearly in conflict with the statute, um, such as the bylaw, uh, requires owner occupancy of either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit.
That could be on my mind.
Yeah, that will no longer be enforceable as of the date of, the effective date of that section of the Affordable Homes Act, February second, two thousand twenty-five. So there's, there's a few clear calls, like clear conflicts that will no longer be enforceable. Um, but there probably will be other provision, bylaw provisions where it's just not clear one way or the other. Um, so that's why it's helpful to take a look at the existing bylaw text and consult with town council and determine what, uh, updates might need to be done.
Thank you.
Uh, Lee, you're going to be asked, but Tom has a follow-up question.
Yeah, this is, this is really for you, Margaret. Has the AG's office, uh, seen a bylaw that you think complies with this law? Uh, recently since, you know, uh, whenever the, August, has, have you approved a bylaw that you think would comply?
We have, um, we have some bylaws actually under review right now. And we are about to issue a series of decisions. So, um, I can't think of one off the top of my head. Um, but if you go to our MLU decision lookup, um, feature on the mass.gov website, I'll, I'll add the address to the chat in a minute. Um, you can search under the topic accessory dwelling unit and that will take you to the most recent decisions. Um, I know that's not a complete answer to your question, but we will be, um, issuing whatever helpful um, guidance we can in the form of our bylaw decisions on this topic.
Now, that's very helpful, thank you.
Uh, Lee, did you have something?
Um, yes, um, I have a rather simple question in that at the beginning of this presentation, I talked a little bit about how this would supersede other zoning laws within an area. How would this relate to historic districts that many of us have at the center of our towns? In terms of ADUs and, and what supersedes what in such situations?
That's a great question, it's a question we were just asking ourselves last week. Uh, that question is one that we're working through right now. Um, if you have thoughts, don't hesitate to submit to us, uh, on, on how you might see that, working with it. Um, we are actively working through that exact question. So I actually do not have an answer because that is literally something we are actively working on.
Great, thank you.
But will very most likely be addressed in the regulations. And if it's not addressed in the regulations, probably in guidance. And I'm pretty sure we're going to hear from folks, if it's not addressed in the regulations, that they wanted it addressed in regulations. And we're pretty sure that if it is addressed in the regulations, that we're going to hear a great commentary on how to better craft what was drafted.
Thank you.
Um, I, I have a question, um, and it's more about money than regulations. Uh, we've had an ADU by right in our town for about four or five years now and very few have gotten built. Uh, our Affordable Housing Trust is starting a program to promote ADUs. But apparently there's difficulty in getting loans, uh, to build ADUs. Is the, uh, is the, uh, is this act, uh, does it include anything to promote ADUs?
Amazing question. Um, the law itself does not. However, we know this is an issue, like we hear you loud and clear. We hear that message across the board in many other municipalities that also have by right ADU laws. And what we are going to have to do, and we've already begun doing it, self-educate the banking industry. There are states that do have similar laws, like, as these like California. And they've gone through that process of educating the banking industry to understand the value of the ADU. Um, so we are going to be having to work very closely on that. We will be working with, uh, as soon as the regulations are done, we will be working on additional resources in that question. Um, because we know that Mass Housing will be interested in finding ways to potentially create financing tools for it. Mass Housing Partnership is also talking to us about some, some potential financing tools. CDAC might have some financing tools as well. And we may have additional financing tools that we can create outside of this law through the capital investment plan and other tools that are available to us to try to do more. But incentivizing and facilitating the actual development is definitely something that's in the front of our minds. Right now, of course, the focus is getting the regulations out the door. But as soon as that regulatory process is complete, or as soon as we, yeah, honestly, as soon as it's complete, we're shifting gears so that we can make sure that that very question you answered is properly dealt with. Uh, because you are right, it is a challenge, it is a significant challenge. Um, we have people on the team ourselves that have gone to try to figure that out themselves for their own properties and have come across the same problems that you're describing. So we know that that's a real challenge, uh, and we are going to be having to do that conversation. We're going to have to have that conversation with the finance sector. Um, building sector is also really interested in that because I know that there are some developers that have financing options available. Um, we're also working really closely with the AG's office because we want to make sure that people aren't scammed. Uh, we, we know that there are products out there that, you know, take advantage of people who are coming in good faith to build something different in their home, to upgrade their homes. And boom, suddenly they have this predatory loan that's going to potentially risk losing their home. We want to make sure that doesn't happen. So there's a lot of work that we're going to have to do in conjunction with the AG's office as well to make sure that seniors aren't trying to be taken, taken advantage of by predatory products that are going to try to just market a beautiful product. But at the end of the day, takes a portion of the ownership of the home from them or puts a significantly high interest rate over the course of, of, of the loan for them to do it. But incentives is also something we're going to look to try to see if it's possible. And how do we do something that supports the production of these units, of these homes?
We have, uh, we have a couple more questions, do you guys still have a few minutes?
I have about five before my children will pull me out of this meeting by force to help her go take a bath.
Uh, we have, uh, one, one question in the room here, and then we have, uh, a person on Zoom. So.
Hi, my name is Lillian, I was just to follow on to your question. Uh, Felipe and Catherine, are your roles funded for the next five years? Or is it a temporary position? Is your role to kind of oversee the regulate, the rollout of the regulation? Or is it to kind of facilitate the production of these eight to ten thousand ADUs?
I love that question, I love questions that look at the future and Catherine in here is going to love the answer. Uh, we are funded, uh, we're not temporary. I am not an appoint person on ADUs, I am the manager of the Community Assistance Unit. So I manage ADUs, seasonal communities, forty R, forty B, forty Y, uh, three A, uh, capital grants, the whole alphabet soup of forty A, that's before Chris Clutchman. So I work under Chris Clutchman on a regular basis, managing all these different programs. And Catherine is our full-time, permanent, to the extent that she wants to be permanent, uh, ADU coordinator. Um, uh, she made a comment earlier, and when we started, that the goal of the Commonwealth is to have anywhere between eight to ten thousand ADUs over the next five years. That's not going to be ten, five thousand ADUs a year, you know, that's definitely not what folks should expect. Uh, so yeah, no, we're planning on keeping Catherine for a while with us, uh, for as long as we can keep her with us to implement this law. Because we know there's going to be questions ongoing, there's going to be issues around reporting, right? The US Census doesn't ask about ADUs. So how do we interpret that around the SHI issues? And how do we coordinate all these questions as we move forward? We're going to have a twenty thirty census, there's going to be an ADU law in Massachusetts. How are we going to overlay that? How are we going to address local needs? It's three hundred and fifty municipalities that this applies to, right? All municipalities but Boston. We're not going to have three hundred and fifty bylaws just on year one, we may have thirty. But then another thirty, and the continuous engagement to make sure that folks understand the value of adopting a bylaw. So no, this, this is a real thing, this is not a temporary conveyance of a program and then we're out the door. Uh, we're planning to support communities for the long haul.
Yeah, just to follow up, thank you Felipe for that overview. Yeah, I would say, um, I'm very much excited to be part of this ADU program. And I, you know, there's a lot of work between here and, and the effective deadline for sure, but there's a lot of work afterwards. And I've been working in kind of in the role that many of you are in now. I've been at kind of in the local level community, um, side of things for a long time. But I'm very excited to be kind of working on this, it's a great team, it's a really great moment for Massachusetts. Um, and but there's a lot for us to figure out to kind of together as well. So I'm, I'm really excited to be part, part of this, uh, of this program as well, yeah. Okay, I think there's one last question, I think, with someone, their hands up.
You wanted to ask a question, Laura?
Let me, yes, um, our planning board has looked at our bylaws and we do have an ADU bylaw which has to be changed, which is not a problem because we are going forward with that. But is there a deadline for these laws to be, uh, adjusted? Is it by the end of the year or do we have six months or is it, what is the situation?
Great question, um, so not trying to be glib, this is not the MTT Communities Law, right? There is no deadline, there's no like this kind of community gets, has a deadline, this kind of community has a deadline, this kind of community has a deadline, no buckets here. The real important thing to keep in mind, two, two twenty-five is not a deadline, it is the effective date of the law. Right now, section seven, which is just the definition of ADU, is law. That has changed in forty-eight already, that is the law. Section eight is not the law of the land yet, that will only be effective on two, two twenty-five. On two, two twenty-five, like we discussed, uh, before, if somebody on Monday, the third, comes to you, by the way, we're not sure that's going to be happening, ramping to all the, we doubt that's going to be happening, but you might have someone. Someone comes to you on the third and says, hey, you know what, I know this law is not in effect, I would really love a permit. Um, if the regulations are not out yet, then we are advising folks to the best of their ability. If they see an ADU permit request that meets the definition of the law, be mindful. Uh, we, we would recommend that you do your best to permit that instead of blocking it. Uh, talk to your legal counsel, of course, to make sure that you're figuring out how the, just like, uh, Margaret was saying, and how does your law still work? Are there components of your law that cannot be enforced on two, two twenty-five? Or ADUs that are being permitted that fall within the definition of the law? Are there any that can be potentially, that are potentially a reasonable restriction that you will, you can work with your legal counsel to figure that out and your planning board to figure that out? However, I will say, our hope is to get you something soon. Uh, at least draft regulations so that you can kind of see where our thinking is going. Because we know that once we have the draft regulation out there, communities like yours that are actively looking at their language will start to be like, oh, okay. So now I get what they're trying to do and let me give some feedback, but I'll, let me also go back to my table and figure out if what I'm trying to do meshes with this draft. Of course, drafts are drafts, final regulations will be final regulations. We would love to have something to you as soon as we can. Uh, and that commentary that folks can provide us will be instrumental in making sure that we can do that work.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to, uh, thank, you, uh, Felipe, Catherine and Margaret, uh, this has been very informative for us and I hope it's helpful for you as well. Um, any other, uh, comments or questions on your part?
Yeah, no, oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah, I know, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank, thank you all for all the work that you're doing and representing your communities. It's, it's much appreciated.
Yeah, we do, we do really appreciate the time as well this evening on this, on the first rainy evening that we've gotten in Massachusetts in a while. Um, so thank you to everybody for coming out. I would say if there are follow-up comments. Either at this stage, um, or once the draft regulations come out, we'd love to hear if it, if there's a way to consolidate that. Um, through, uh, maybe Tom, um, you know, from like different members, so we can kind of address that together, particularly as it applies to more rural and 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 town-like communities. Uh, that would be really helpful as well. So let's, let's aim to do a bit of a check back in, um, and maybe at that point as well. But yeah, just wanna say a big thank you on, on. On behalf of everybody at the H L C and and A G O's office.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks all, we'll be touch.
Okay, take care, everyone.
Yeah, um, the representative Barrett, uh, was not able to make it tonight, um, and.
Recording in progress.
Um. If you wanna have a little bit of a discussion of some of your.
Okay, we do have a few minutes on the vendor, if, uh, if we'd like that to be discussing. Among us without.
If we have some concerns or it sounds like building officials have already, I guess. My, my question to you is, um, February second, you know, their use table says that. Accessory dwelling units are not allowed by special permit. And then somebody comes in for a permit, you've gotta give you the permit.
Right, we're working, um, diligently right now to try to have the, um, ADU bylaw or ordinance in place.
Okay, that's in Pittsfield.
In Pittsfield, yeah. I don't know about other communities.
But in other communities, what happens there, right?
I do four towns and we're all, you know, working on, trying to get something in place.
Okay, so you're, you're, all your towns are working on zoning amendments? Is that generally the case, I guess?
Well, I mean, some don't have any at all.
Okay.
And some, you know, have them that, you know, don't fall in line with what they're saying, like owner occupied and by special permit.
Right.
So all those have to be corrected.
Yeah, um, well, that's good. The towns are working on it.
Okay, so but I think a lot of the questions around that I brought up are, 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 we don't, we're not sure how to craft parts of that ordinance. Um, related to a single and two-family, uh, district. Are we required to allow an ADU where there's a three-family in a single-family district? And, and if, if so, i- if that's a requirement, then, you know, that, that triggers a whole bunch of other things. Um, building code-wise, um, um, but also, you know, setback distances, because the, the, you know. I'm not sure all the questions yet, because we're not sure what our ordinance has to look like. Regarding single-family districts where you have a non-conforming use. Um.
Something like lot coverage is, now that doesn't seem like it addresses any, you know. Lot coverage would still apply, I guess, because it doesn't say that you have to ignore it, so.
Yeah, I think setbacks, lot coverage.
How restrictive can we be with the height? That's a discussion recently. Where our setbacks, um, uh, were making a difference between an accessory structure and an accessory dwelling unit. Because it's a dwelling. We're saying you can't go up to the rear property line like we can with a shed. Um, we're gonna say twenty feet. Is that unreasonable, you know?
Um. That would be a new step to acting, right?
It would be a new setback be- because the principal structure may be twenty-five feet.
Right.
So we're being less restrictive than the principal structure, but more restrictive than an accessory structure. Uh, because it is a dwelling, we don't want that, uh, as close to the property line as, uh. And that's still being under discussion, what that number should be, because does that eliminate a lot of them because they don't have enough room on the property to. Uh, to allow for that, if it's a separate, if it's a detached accessory structure, uh, accessory dwelling unit. And again, the, the, the whole triggered in the building code, if you have a two-family on a single-family district. And you add a third attached accessory dwelling unit, that's triggering a sprinkler system. Um, and also, if it's a separate, a detached dwelling unit, that triggers a herd rating through the energy code. So I, my, one of my questions was gonna be, is any of that funding earmarked for that? Uh, to help people, because I, I think the whole idea is to make it affordable. Uh, I, I know that, I don't think that's in the regulation, but. You know, to make more housing, but affordable housing, I assume. I don't think that's gonna make anything affordable. Um, need to be the bearer of bad news, but we enforce the building code and the zoning ordinance, so. Um, once we get past zoning, then we say, well, everybody's gonna be, you know, a lot of these commercial investors, because that's what this is encouraging, commercial investors. Because they don't have to live there, right? They're, they're gonna be happy because they can do this. They can buy these properties, put an accessory dwelling unit on it. And then we're gonna say, hold on, now you gotta have a sprinkler or, you know, spend a lot of money to get there. So, um, we'll take the brunt of the, uh, you know, disgruntlement in our office. I'll, I'll stop there.
Can I ask you a question? When you're doing setbacks for different zoning districts, are you looking at a different setback? Because it seems like thirty feet in a certain district might be fine, but in another district, that might be different.
Yeah, we have different setbacks. In the different reg, uh, single-family districts. And we don't have a lot, I mean, we have a lot of single-family districts and two-family districts where you could do either. Um, but, um, the setbacks are somewhat different, but we're not looking at them for the accessory dwelling unit that's detached as different. Um, so I, I'm not sure where we're gonna land on that yet. We're having a lot of discussion and have a lot of meetings, a lot more than I wanna ask.
Oh, who's answering?
Yeah, does the ADU have to be on a foundation?
It does. Well, yes, it does. Some type of foundation. You know, a foundation may not be. A, a, a continuous footing with a wall. It could be, um, frost-protected piers.
Okay.
That need code. So yes, not on wheels. As far as working.
You would still have to follow the building code, like a single-family house. There's no, there's no exception. Have to look at it like a single-family house, really.
So if your, your question about could it be on a slab, yes, it could be on a slab that's frost-protected, like your garage is a frost, usually frost-protected. There's a. There's a limit for accessory structures in the building code. Uh, like a small garage, uh, no more than four hundred square feet, ten-foot eve height, you could be not frost-protected. There's very, uh, restricted limits on that. But I don't think that applies to a dwelling.
No.
When you add the word dwelling in there, that changes it all. Accessory structure is different than an accessory dwelling, and that would have to be frost-protected. So we also, by the way, the building code now allows tiny homes. Since October eleventh, tiny homes are allowed in Massachusetts. Tiny homes are not on wheels, they're on a foundation. So you could have a, a tiny, you could have a bunch of tiny homes as ADUs. Uh, a tiny home is no more than four hundred square feet, um, as defined in the building code. So you could have, if you're gonna allow more than one. Uh, with a special permit, um, can you allow three on a lot? Can, can a, a tiny home be the principal structure and an ADU? Um, I anticipate that's gonna happen in empty lots.
Not, not by this moment, where the ADU can't be more than fifty percent the size.
Yeah, that's true. That's, that's a good one. Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Is that October eleventh of this past year or a month ago?
The tenth edition of the building code was passed.
Oh, okay.
And, um, uh, it includes, um, tiny homes in appendix, appendix Q, the tenth edition of the building code. We're in a phase now where you can use either the ninth or the tenth until, right now, January thirtieth. We're trying to extend it a little further.
Okay.
Laura?
Hi, Diane George from Lashford.
Thank you.
Um, I just had a question kind of on what you were saying. So they're allowing the, a permanent, uh. Permanent house and then a AD, a, a U, um, to be built. And the owner does not have to live in it. Would that then convert it into a commercial property? And for a town like us who only has two tax rates, commercial and private? Would it then shoot that into a pri- a commercial tax zone?
I think you'd have to ask the assessors that question.
We'd have to look at how they are assessing properties right now, if they're not owner occupied. Are they considering them?
All of ours are owner occupied.
You don't have anybody that rents their house?
Not totally, no.
Ask another town, huh?
So towns around here, we know everybody. Uh, Laura, you got something?
Oh, just to follow up, the four hundred square foot limit, that's a Massachusetts definition. Is that consistent with other states for a tiny home?
Um, well, that's out of the state building code, which is adopted in many states.
Yeah.
Um, Massachusetts made one amendment. Um, and it really was a clarifying amendment. It requires one means of egress. Where any other dwelling, with some exceptions, when you add sprinklers, require two means of egress. But a, a tiny home is not gonna have a sprinkler system and we're gonna allow one means of egress, you know, which is reasonable. You could also have. A ladder to get up to a loft. Um, um, there's a lot of leeway in there. Um, we also, um, allow straw, straw, straw bale homes and, um, three D homes. Are in the code. Doesn't mean we're gonna see any of them. They're just allowed in the code. A lot of changes to the building code. I'm on that board, by the way, that's why I know all these things.
Yeah, anything else? I think we discussed as much as they can tell us.
More to come.
What I will do is keep a lookout at the municipal law unit to see which bylaws have passed. Because I think that's gonna inform us a lot, because if their decisions, the attorney general's decisions. Are explanatory and they will say this is allowed because of this, this is denied because it's inconceivable by the law. So that should help, uh, help others formulate things. And also, you know, if, if there's some concern that there are gonna be a lot of these things coming on board. You know, February third, which I don't know if there will be, but there could be a public hearing with a zoning bylaw amendment that would freeze that. In, in essence, yeah. So if you're concerned, and, and wait until a, uh, your annual town meeting. As long as you have the public hearing and it's, you know, posted correctly and all that.
I, I think the public hearing is gonna create quite a firestorm. Um, Pittsburgh, I'll tell you right now, is considering being more liberal with this and allowing short-term rentals and an ADU. I, I don't know, but if that helps with the housing.
I think they're more prohibited.
I think it, it doesn't prohibit it, it allows you to prohibit it.
Yeah.
So, but you can be more permissive. Uh, and I, I think we're heading in that direction, uh, more permissive. Um, because we're also trying to address short-term rental bylaw ordinance in the city. So. Uh, it'll be fun when it all starts hitting the ground.
Yeah, but you, you're, it's easier in Pittsburgh because you don't have to go to the attorney general.
I, oh, right, yeah, right. Well, not easier because then it all comes back to us, right?
Yeah, but you don't have to comply with a law, really.
Right, until a court case, right.
Well.
Okay, um. There's no more questions or comments from the ones that are being, uh, addressed on the agenda.
Thank you. We're gonna have, yeah.
Diane, you can stay too. We, I, I'm sorry, I don't know if you can take that back to you or not. Okay, well, I'm sorry, and I asked you to, but you had some stuff. I'm hoping that we can get you on as a delegate or a volunteer. From New Ashford. We haven't had a lot of participation in the town, so welcome.
Thank you. Is there a, I can get on the emailing list. I'm getting all my information either from past planning board people or whatever, so.
I will.
Like this came from Mark Phelps and.
It's, it's not that hard to get a point, you know, but I would be, uh, helping a delegate read them. Yeah, 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 these are public meetings, so. And I will, I will respond, make sure your question gets answered, Mark.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, uh, uh, discussion of the executive committee action was, um, for. October tenth and November seventh. Those listed in the.
Representing Barrett.
Well, thank you. Yeah, just to repeat, we're skipping, uh, item five on the agenda and beyond item six, uh, because Representative Barrett is not even there. Uh, so, uh, the executive committee actions were taken on October tenth and seventh or included in the packet. Uh, are there any questions about, uh, those actions? Any need for discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, then we will go to the next item, which is to vote to amend the B R P C bylaws. And before I entertain a motion, let's just talk about this, say, what, uh, this is all about. Uh, Tom, can you explain that briefly?
Yes, uh, so in January this year, we wanted to try to be a little bit more efficient. In terms of our, uh, officers and, and board membership. And it's been somewhat of a, a challenge for staff year after year to kind of go through a process of nominating and all that. In terms of getting our officers, uh, in line. So we thought we'd go to a, a two-year cycle or term. But, uh, in fact, that's not allowed. Looking at the law, there is a regional planning law that, um, doesn't allow us to do that. So we've got to, um, amend a lot of the bylaws back or basically undo those amendments we did in January. And that really also is a segue to the next one. We need to vote to elect our officers for F I twenty-five. Um, because they were voted, the last time they were voted for was in July of, uh, twenty twenty-three.
So, uh, we'll take these two items, uh, which are on the seventh and eighth, uh, um, on the agenda separately, but they're tied together. Uh, so I want to entertain a motion to approve the amendment of the bylaws. Second, uh, no, you're making a motion. Will you make it?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Now we get a second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, uh, thank you, Kyle. Uh, so with Peter and Kyle, uh, making a motion. Uh, are there any questions or discussion about the, uh, uh, changes that were included in the packet? Listen to everyone. Hey, if there are any questions, we'll just proceed to vote. Um. Sheila, will you?
I'm ready. Um, uh, Beckett?
Yes.
Uh, Cheshire?
Yes.
Egremont?
Yes.
Great Barrington?
Yes.
Hinstow?
Yes.
Lanesboro?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Monterey? Monterey? Laura Menci? Okay, um, North Adams?
Yes.
Pittsfield, yes. Uh, Sheffield?
Yes.
Back reached.
Yes.
Washington?
You're moving it down.
Don Gagnon?
He's turning on mute.
Oops, he was.
Okay. Williamstown?
Yes.
Windsor?
Yes.
Go back to Don.
Okay. Don?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that's it.
Hey, thank you. The motion passes, um, the, the bylaws are amended and we'll go on to the, uh, next order of business, which is to, uh, vote for the, um. Uh, the R P C officers for this fiscal year. Uh, the officers, uh, currently are, uh, chair, uh, myself, Malcolm Fick. Vice Chair John DeValle, Clerk Sheila Urban, and Treasurer Buck Donovan. Um, are there any nominations for other, uh, uh, for any of these positions? Hearing none, um, we will just take an up and down vote on this slate then. Um, do we have to make a motion? We need a motion. Yes, we do have a motion. Um, so moved, thank you, Peter. Peter, uh, moved to, uh, approve the slate. We have a second.
Second?
Roger. Were you raising your hand?
Who seconded that?
I'm Diana Beckett, I seconded it.
Was the second? Uh, any discussion? We don't need any discussion, I don't think. We have another slate, so let's proceed right to a vote.
Okay, um, Beckett?
Yes.
Cheshire?
Yeah.
Egremont?
Yes.
Great Barrington?
Yes.
Hinsdale?
Yes.
Lanesboro?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Monterey? North Adams?
Yes.
Pittsfield, yes. Sheffield?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Williamstown?
Yes.
And Windsor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is discussion of the executive director's report. Um, there's a lot of interesting things in here, Tom, you want to highlight?
What, what, one of the things I want to highlight is just this afternoon, where we were for a designated a level three drop, so that it ramped up. And I, maybe this rain will pick us back down to a, a level two. And, and I guess that was earlier. We got asked that we kind of promote that. Actually, yeah. Make sure that people are aware of that. And there's one other item that I want to point out that um, there, we had advertised that there was going to be a, a CPQC Western Mass Conference in Greenfield um, on December seventh. That has been canceled, but it's not going to happen if anybody was interested in doing that. That was one of the conferences thing and I was kind of, I do go to, I'm a new member. Um, so uh, that isn't going to happen. And I do want to highlight this holistic land use plan that is being um, uh, started, initiated by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Because I think this is an important piece of, of work that this administration is going to be doing. Over the past several months and over this last year, year and a half or so, the administration has been doing a lot of planning with different types of plans and different types of policy initiatives. And we've raised the question that how do they work together? Now, they got a transportation plan doing this, they have housing plan that's going to be doing this, economic development plan, and a deciding bill, and a lot of different, sometimes disparate, sometimes conflicting, I think, in terms of policies. And this holistic land use plan is supposed to tie them all together and, and remove those different inconsistencies or conflicts. So I'm, I'm really interested that this is going to be happening and we want to be engaged in this as much as we can going forward. Because I think it will help on, on a lot of different policy clarifications. But those are the, I think, the key items. I'm glad that they answered questions that I haven't heard as well.
Any uh, questions, comments? Once again, it was a very good reporting. Okay, uh, so we have one additional and final item of business, uh, or a ready motion?
Adrian, Great Barrington, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Pedro. Second, thank you, Peter. Uh, so we move, uh, Sheila, will you run?
I certainly will.
Beckett?
Yes.
Cheshire?
Yes.
Egremont?
Yes.
Great Barrington?
Yes.
Uh, Hinsdale?
Yes.
Lanesboro?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
North Adams?
Yes.
Pittsfield, yes. Sheffield?
Yes.
Stockbridge?
Yes.
Uh, Washington?
Yes.
Williamstown?
Yes.
And Windsor?
Yes.
I mean, it's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.